All right. Thank you all for coming. It's a few minutes after four o'clock. Welcome to the May 11, 2023 Little Rock Planning Commission Meeting. There may be some overflow seating outside. I'm not certain of that. I hate to see all you folks standing up because sometimes we're here for three hours. So we don't want you to have to stand for that long. Our first order of business is to have a roll call and determine a quorum. And who's reading the reading tonight? Okay, Torrance is reading tonight. So if you'll call roll, please.
It's a roll call for the May 11, 2023 Planning Commission Meeting. Brown?
Here.
Hart?
Here.
Hodge, Commissioner Hodge. Haynes. Commissioner Haynes. Latur.
Here.
McDonald.
Present.
Thomas.
I'm present. I'm here.
Vickers.
Present.
Vogel. Commissioner Vogel. Whitaker. Commissioner Whitaker. Six.
We have six members present. We have a quorum. Six Commissioners.
Okay. I'll have an announcement to make about the six Commissioner thing in just a minute. Before we do that, I think we can, we do have a quorum. I think we can go ahead and get the minutes approved from April with our six Commissioners. So I would entertain a motion for approval of the minutes from the last Planning Commission Meeting in April.
Motion to approve the minutes?
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
And we have a motion and a second. Any discussion? We'll go ahead and do a roll call vote with those online, Mr. Thrower.
Yes, sir. Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes? Hodge? Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel? Whitaker? A minute is approved.
Okay, the minutes stand approved. We're going to go into the presentation of the consent agenda. Before I do that, and this has been a problem the last couple of months, but it looks to be even more severe tonight. We have a total of six Planning Commissioners present out of 11. And so if you are here to submit an item tonight, know that you have to get six yes votes, whether there are six of us here or nine of us here. So that means you have to bat 1,000 with your presentation. So we're going to go ahead and read the consent agenda in a moment, but be thinking about if you're not on the consent agenda and if you're making a presentation tonight, we can temporarily amend the bylaws and allow you to defer because there is a lower number of Commissioners. So give that a little thought. And then what I'm going to do is when we get to the end of the consent agenda, I'm going to ask each one of those who are who have opposition tonight and who have to present their agenda item, I'll ask you if you choose to defer. If you do, we'll just add that deferral to the consent, consent deferral. Okay. So we're going to read the consent agenda first. And then when we get to the end of that, before we take a vote, I'll ask each of you making a presentation tonight to see if you want to defer until next month, or go ahead and have your item heard tonight. Any questions?
Mr. Chairman?
Yeah.
Question of procedure, and this may go to the attorney. One of the items that may get discussed, I have to defer from, since there's only six of us here, can we still put that on the consent agenda to defer? Or do we have to do those separately? Right. What I'm saying is, what the chairman's saying is put everything at the end to defer it?
Yes.
Do we have to, can I, will I still be able to vote one way or the other on that deferral? Do I need to leave the room? Because if I leave the room, it's all one thing. They only have five. I don't make sure we don't get in a procedural issue.
He's going to abstain on item D.
Right. But if we have every, but if item D gets put in with all the consent stuff for deferral, do I still need to defer off of that? Are we good?
Bear with us just a second, folks.
Yeah. And that is true. It's an automatic deferral.
Okay.
Because of the conflict, and that will be at our cost. So that the applicant does not pay for the cost of that deferral.
Okay. But I don't need to remove myself from that vote, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
No, we're not. We're not even going to have it on consent. We won't have it on the consent deferral.
You won't even vote on it. It'll just automatically be deferred. Okay.
So I would say to Mr. Reese and his consultants and all of those here to either oppose or speak in favor of it, we will not have enough Planning Commissioners to vote on that item tonight. We have six, but when one abstains, we'll only have five. So we literally cannot hear that item tonight. I apologize for that. I know the bulk of the room probably is here to talk about that item, and I know we deferred it last month. This is the sort of what we're living through right now. So, okay, back to the, yeah, go ahead.
And I just want to make this clear on the record that that deferral is because of a conflict of interest. Is that correct?
Yes.
Okay. But before we turn all these folks loose, and are we, Mr. Overton, you think we're good to turn?
Absolutely. Yes.
Okay.
So it would be, it would, Mr. Reese, it would have to be deferred because of the conflict of interest. It would take the vote from six to five. Obviously, you need six votes, so it can't be heard. I know the, the Planning Commission is looking at the, at this, and this will be at the city's cost. In regards to noticing, nothing else, sir.
Yeah. Okay. 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 Well, we won't. We, yeah, we won't wait on that. Okay. Okay. All right. So before the consent agenda is read, if you are here specifically for item D, whether you're presenting, speaking in favor of, or opposition to, that will be rescheduled until next month. So if you're here specifically for that, I'll give the room a few minutes to clear out. If you want to stay with us and hear the rest of our agenda, you're more than welcome. Item D, by the way, is the Cantrell West Retail Center at 15122 Cantrell Road. Okay. So, Mr. Moore, if you'll read the consent agenda, and then I'll call on all of the remaining applicants who are not on the consent agenda to see whether you wish to defer with the six votes, or you wish to go ahead and have your item heard tonight. Mr. Moore?
Following is the consent agenda, Little Rock Planning Commission Meeting of May 11, 2023. You have one item on consent deferral, item B, the Hillcrest Design Overlay District Amendment. Staff recommends this item be deferred to the June 8, 2023 Planning Commission Hearing. Next are the items on consent approval. Item A, file number Z3748A, Param Place Revised PCD 300 South Rodney Param Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD revision, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item C, Z5502K, West Canis Storage 2, PDC, west of 17301 Canis Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PCD zoning to allow mini warehouse development, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number one, G23488, North Polk Street Right-of-Way Abandonment, adjacent to 5423 Country Club Boulevard. Staff recommends approval of the abandonment of the 15-foot by 140-foot portion of Polk, of Polk Street Right-of-Way, located adjacent to Lot 7, Block 20 Newton's Edition, subject to retaining a 10-foot wide sewer easement running east-west across the south end of the abandonment area. We've moved item two to regular. We've also moved item three to regular. Next on consent approvals, item four, Z9768, Hicks Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, 2600 North Rodney Param Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D E, D and E, and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number five, Z9774, Organesian Duplex CUP, 2611 Johnson Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number six, Z9776, Gray Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, 421 South Maple Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item number seven, Z9780, Kaishun, Kaishun's Accessory Dwelling Conditional Use Permit, 519 Valmar Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested CUP, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D and E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. We've moved item nine to the regular agenda. Next on consent approvals, item 10, Z9775, a rezoning from R3 to R7A, 3512 East 39th Street. Staff recommends approval of the requested R7A zoning to allow for the placement of a single-wide manufactured home, subject to the following conditions: compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report; compliance with the manufactured home minimum siding standards as noted in section 36262D2 of the city's zoning ordinance. Item number 11, Z4213K, Brandon House Event Center, Revised POD 12120, Colonel Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested Revised POD zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraph E and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. Item 12, Z974A, Life Skills for Youth, PDO, north side of West Baseline Road, approximately 200 feet west of Stagecoach Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDO zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions outlined in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And the final item on consent approval is item 13, Z9778, Caliber Collision Auto Body Shop, PDC 10302, Colonel Glen Road. Staff recommends approval of the requested PDC zoning, subject to compliance with the comments and conditions noted in paragraphs D, E, and F and the staff analysis of the Agenda Staff Report. And we've moved item 14 to regular.
Item 14 is regular. I didn't catch, item, item 12. Did you read item 12? Life Skills for Youth?
Yes.
It is on the consent agenda?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Okay. So now what I'm going to do is call those applicants. You can come to the podium or just state what you want to do. We, by the way, we have had one more Planning Commissioner join us. He was having some technical issues. We have a total of seven now, but you still get the opportunity to defer if you, if you wish to do that. So the first item I have on the regular agenda is S1941, The Little West Edition. If the applicant is present, do you still want to have your, have your item heard tonight?
Brian Dale, Joe White and Associates, we'd like to take a deferral till next month, please.
Take a deferral to next month. Okay. All right. Okay. The next item, thank you. Monty's marking that down right now. The next item we have is item three, Storage Space LLC, a conditional use permit. This is 102 South Rodney Param Road. Is the applicant present? Here he comes.
I'm Barry Davidson with Davidson Engineering. On behalf of the applicant, we'd like to defer to next month if we can.
For as well. Okay. Okay. Thank you. The next item I have on the regular agenda is item number nine, Z9781, Williams Daycare Family Home, Special Use Permit. We do have a card for this one. So it's just one card. So does the applicant want to have it heard tonight or defer?
Heard.
Go ahead and hear it? Okay.
Mr. President Chair, you also have item eight on regular.
Well, I'm. Oh, yes, I do. I'm sorry. Item. So item eight, Z9777, Arkansas Quality Therapy at 3209 Ludwig, is the applicant here for that one?
Yes.
You want to, do you want us to hear it or defer it?
Hear it.
Hear it. Okay. All right. So I'm going to go back to, did we got item nine? Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay. I've got item 14, item Z9782, which has been moved to the regular agenda, the done mixed use. Item 14 has one card in opposition. Would you like to defer or have it heard tonight?
We're, we're defer.
Defer. Okay. Item, well, this other one is, item 15 is going to be us. I don't, who's presenting the master street plan amendment? And how do we want to handle that one?
Maybe, maybe Mr. Malone.
I think with a large number of people here, we owe it to them to go ahead and hear the item.
Go ahead and hear about the street. Okay, we'll do that. Yeah, I would like to hear those comments.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So where we stand, item D was deferred automatically to June 8. And then we've added items two and three to consent deferral to the June 8 agenda. And that leaves on the, item 14, two, three, and 14, have been added to the consent agenda to defer to June 8. So that leaves eight, nine, 15, and 16 on regular.
Okay. Items, so the only thing left for us to, the business we're going to attend to tonight are items eight, the Arkansas Quality Therapy, items nine, the Williams Daycare Family Home, item 15, which is the master street plan, and then there are some Planning Commission bylaws at, at the very end, which I'm sure no one's here for. So why don't we go ahead and have a reading on item eight, Arkansas Quality Therapy?
You'll need to take a motion and to approve the consent agenda.
Oh, yeah, I'm sorry. Yeah, got to do that. Okay. I need a motion to approve the consent agenda, including all those deferrals that just got added to it.
Motion to approve the consent agenda with all deferrals as indicated?
We have a.
Second.
You have a motion and a second. Okay, roll call vote. Mr. Thrower?
Brown?
Yes.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge? Latur?
Yes.
McDonald? Commissioner McDonald? Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel? Whitaker? I'd like to go back to Commissioner McDonald. Can you hear us?
Okay, we have six yeses. All right. The motion passes. We have six.
Motion passes, six votes.
All right, the consent agenda has been approved. Ladies, I see you're already at the podium for item eight. Before we get you. Oh.
We apologize if we're out of order. We didn't hear 11. That's all we were trying to do, get some clarification.
11 was approved on the consent agenda.
Okay.
Yes, the Brandon House Events Center has, was just approved. Okay. All right. Okay. Mr. Moore, are we ready for item eight at this point?
Okay, item eight, file number.
I'm asking you, are we ready for item eight? Okay, let's go ahead with that.
Okay. Item eight, file number Z9777, this Arkansas Quality Therapy Group Care Facility Special Use Permit, located at 3209 Ludwig Street. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow for a group care facility to be operated in an existing duplex structure. The proposed group care facility will have a maximum of nine residents with three full-time staff. The site contains a 2,244 square foot, one-story, two-family residence. The shared access drive extends from West 32nd Street, which provides rear access to several existing duplex structures along the frontage of Ludwig Street. The applicant notes that three full-time positions will be, for the facility will be two residential administrators and one residential manager, with part-time positions being one case manager, one behavioral therapist, and one AQT director. The applicant did provide additional information with respect to the proposed group care facility that's in your staff report. I won't go over that. I'll let the applicant present any of that information. There are three parking spaces, which are located behind the duplex structure. The applicant notes that residents of the group care facility will not have vehicles. We also provided information on section 3654E4, which are provisions for living facilities like group care facilities in your staff report. According to an area survey, there are no other transitional residential facilities within 1,500 feet of this property. Section, sections eight, 406A and B of the city's code requires minimum area for a residence of this kind and a minimum area per bedroom. And the applicant provided all that information, and this proposal does comply with sections eight, 406A and B. Staff does not support the requested special use permit to allow group care facility at 3209 Ludwig Street, although staff survey revealed no other residential facilities within 1,500 feet of this site, and the proposed occupancy will conform with section thirty, or eight, 406 of the code. Staff feels the proposed group care facility is too institutional in nature for this existing two-family residence. Staff believes that a group home type facility with up to nine residents and three around-the-clock staff, including overlap in shift change times, and the potential for visitors for the nine residents is too intense for this single-family subdivision. Staff believes the applicant should seek a residential location, running a more major roadway, possibly along the perimeter of a single-family subdivision. Therefore, staff recommends denial of the requested SUP to allow group care facility.
Okay, Mr. Moore, I don't have any cards in.
We're looking to provide a teenage transitional home. We're partnering with Arkansas Rehabilitation and DHS to provide a special transition to kind of combat recidivism for juvenile, kids going to juvenile. We currently provide services in the juvenile. These nine kids that'll be selected will be handpicked out of the hundreds of kids we provide services to on an annual basis. These nine kids will be the best of the best, the cream of the crop to actually come in and kind of be a part of our pilot program. We have 24-hour staff, we have adequate programming. They pretty much sleep there throughout the night, but throughout the day they are working, they are getting taught job employment skills, they are going to various therapies, so that's what we have.
Questions from Commissioners?
You said this was, how many bedrooms again?
We have a total of six bedrooms and two bathrooms.
Okay, for some reason I thought the house was just two bedroom.
No ma'am, it's a duplex, it's a 3-1 on both sides, and we're looking to utilize both sides for this service.
Okay.
Point of information, you said there is no community opposition, is that correct?
I don't have any.
No cards?
Yeah, I don't have any opposition.
I guess the question to staff, have we had any concerns voiced from the community at all?
I received no letters as of yesterday for this item.
Yes, Chairman?
Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Vickers here, just more directed towards the staff. The staff recommended denial for major, and they said it needed to be maybe close to a major roadway, and what was the other items that the staff recommended needed for their approval?
Basically, we're saying that the proposed use is too institutional in nature for this single-family subdivision, and it really needs to be located. I mean, I know they're looking for a residential type structure, but it needs to be more on the outskirts of a neighborhood, in our opinion, rather than right in the middle of a neighborhood.
Thank you.
Chairman Horrigan?
This is Commissioner Thomas, I have a question for staff.
Yeah, go ahead, Ms. Thomas.
You said near a major roadway, isn't this near Barrow?
It is close to, it's in the John Barrow Neighborhood Association, it's what it's, I mean, Barrow Road, I'm not exactly sure where it's, it's about, it's a block over. But the John Barrow roadway is actually the center of the neighborhood, basically. So we're looking for something a little more on the outer edge of the neighborhood.
May I ask why? Is that for emergency services reason, or?
We just feel that that'd be a more appropriate location rather than when surrounded by residential zoning.
Was there someone else online who had a question? Okay, so on the parking, there's three, three full-time staff members will be here. None of the residents will have their own vehicles.
No, sir.
So the three staff members would park, is there on-street parking?
There's a cement slab right behind the duplex, and they will have three parking spots back there.
Any other questions, comments from staff?
This is Commissioner Vickers again.
Go ahead.
This is directed to the gentleman. You know, talk about the teenage youth, you said the cream of the crop, could you expand a little bit further on that, as far as, like, how many would be there on a monthly basis? Would there be months that nobody's in the house? Would there be times that there's only one teenager in the house? I mean, is there a contract? I mean, how is...
Yes, sir, we have a...
How is this done?
We currently have a contract with Arkansas Rehabilitation and DHS and DHS. We are, like I stated earlier, we actually provide services in juvenile facilities across the state of Arkansas now. So those same kids, out of the 100, 200 kids, we provide services to select few that will be picked from those programs and will be eligible and qualified for our transitional program.
So there will be teenagers, basically, in there every day, every month?
So it's a 10-month program. Our job is to get them out of the facility, and in 10 months we are tasked to teach them job skills, job training, and actually have them a full-time job by the time they leave our program.
So every 10 months, there will be a new batch of teenagers coming in?
Yes, contingent upon those who qualify. There's a certain standard that they have to qualify, so many minimum behaviors while they're in the actual facilities, and if they cross over, you know, three behaviors while they're in that facility, they're automatically disqualified from coming to our transitional program.
I need to kind of stop this conversation right here.
Yes, sir.
And the reason why being that group homes are protected and people's disabilities are protected classes in the Fair Housing Act. So I'm getting pretty uncomfortable discussing teen disabilities, or what their achievement levels are, or what type of status they would be in the home, because under the Fair Housing Act, we cannot discriminate against group homes or people's disabilities or familial status.
Absolutely.
We got to keep it strictly to public safety, health, and welfare.
Any type of disabilities? I just wanted to have a better understanding for the protection of the citizens and the protection of the community.
Understood.
Thank you.
This is Commissioner Thomas again. We don't have any oppositions from any of the community or the neighbors or anything? No cards or letters sent in?
Well, there are no cards, there's no one here, unless I'm overlooking a card, there's no one in the audience tonight to speak against this.
Okay, okay.
Chairman, I've double-checked the correspondence folder, it's been updated as of today. I have no letters of opposition that staff has received regarding this item.
Any other questions? Anything else, sir, you'd like to mention? We're about to vote, I think.
No, sir.
Okay, all right. Mr. Thrower, let's, if there are no other questions or comments from Commissioners on this, we will go ahead and have a roll call vote on this item.
You'll need a motion first.
Sorry, we do need a motion. Can I get a motion for approval, please?
Since staff has recommended against this, what's the proper phrasing of the motion?
It would be a motion to approve with all of staff's comments, except their recommendation of denial.
Motion to approve the item with all of staff's recommendations, except for the recommendation for denial.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Any further discussion? Okay, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
Yes.
Horrigan?
No.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
No.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel? Whitaker? 542 against?
542 against, the motion fails. Mr. Moore, can he appeal that?
Yes, he can appeal at the City Board.
Appeal to the City Board, okay. Okay, next item on the agenda, item nine, I have Mr. Moore read. Item nine, please, this is the Williams Daycare Family Home.
Item number nine, this Williams Daycare Family Home Special Use Permit located at 8401 Fairwood Road. The applicant is requesting a special use permit to allow daycare family home to be operated in a single-family residence on the R2 Zone property at 8401 Fairwood Road. The proposed daycare family home will have a maximum of 10 children. The applicant proposes hours of operation from 7:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. Monday through Sunday. The site contains a 1,672 square foot, one-story, single-family residence located at the southwest corner of Fairwood Road and Tombs Road. Two concrete driveways extend from Tombs Road along the south property line. The northernmost drive leads to a two-car garage. The applicant notes that a second driveway to the south will be designated as drop-off and pickup area for the daycare use. This driveway leads to a gate which provides access, access the rear entry of the residence. Staff provided you with the daycare criteria, site and location criteria is found in Section 3654 E3 of the code. To staff's knowledge, everything associated with this daycare will comply with that. I will mention one thing about the fire marshal inspection, which is required, that the applicant has not obtained that yet, and I'll mention that a little further later. Survey by staff found one other daycare use located at 8,001, 8,003 Mayville Cut Off. This is approximately 1,285 feet from this property. Staff knows of no other daycare uses in this area, and the Section 3654 requires that there be no other daycare family homes or daycare uses within 300 feet of this property, which there are none. To staff's knowledge, the only outstanding issue is with the fire marshal inspection report, and that is pending. Staff feels the proposed daycare family home with this location will have no adverse impact on the general area. Again, based on a survey, there are no other daycare family homes or daycare uses within 300 feet. Therefore, staff recommends approval of the special use permit to allow daycare family home at this location, subject to the following conditions: compliance with the site and location criteria is found in 3654 E3 of the code; there is to be no signage beyond that permitted in single-family zones; outdoor activities, including playground use, are limited to daylight hours; and the applicant will need written approval from the fire marshal, and that must be submitted to staff prior to the operation of the daycare family home.
Okay, the applicant appears to be at the podium, correct?
Yes.
Okay, could you state your name and address, please?
Keisha Williams, 8401 Fairwood Road.
Great, thank you for being here. So we just have one card in opposition to this tonight, and the way this works is you can either tell us a little bit about your, about the agenda item, or you can wait until after the opposition goes, and then you can speak to the Commissioners and answer any questions. You have a preference on what you'd rather do?
I'd rather hear the opposition.
Just wait till the opposition, okay. All right, so I'll go ahead and pull the one card we have on this for item nine, Troy Leahy, 6602 Baseline Suite E. Mr. Leahy?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, Little Rock Planning Commission and Planning Staff. I'm Troy Leahy, Vice President, Southwest Little Rock United for Progress. In a regular meeting scheduled on May 1st, Southwest Community Center, our group voted to oppose this application, which is item nine, filed Z 9782, Williams Daycare Family Home, 8401 Fairwood Road Special Use Permit. Applicant was not present. I notified the applicant by telephone using the numbers that they listed on their application, and they didn't show up at the meeting. As the staff pointed out, there's quite a few things in this daycare centers. I thought there was more of them out there in Southwest than they're referring to. But we would appreciate y'all denying this request. I think these people need to work through what they're planning on doing and develop their plan a little more thorough to really show what they plan to do. Because these daycare centers have been all over them, we've got probably an inch, inch and a half file full of them, and I quit keeping up with them. Most of them are all out of business now. They didn't stay very long, and that's the history of them, they don't stay very long. Thank you.
Okay, would the applicant like to come back up and address those comments?
Yes. So on the May 1st hearing, I did come to that hearing at the community center, and I was stepped aside by Ms. Joan Akkup, and we had a conversation. From there, she told me I should get with my neighborhood association person, and which I did, which was Ms. Cole Thulegian-Hut. I sent her an email, and I did not receive a message back in regards to that offer, if she had any additional information about me wanting to implement my home as a family daycare. And as far as, like, being regulated, I plan on working with the Division of Childcare and Early Childhood Education, and that's part of their licensing onboard to get a special use permit, so that's really what led me here, because otherwise you do just have daycares without having to have a special use based on the number of kids that you have. So that basically implements everything that I wanted to offer. It'd be from 7 to 5, I did change those hours. And there's three ways to get into the neighborhood, which is off-spin, Brimmer or Fairwood, so I don't feel like I would impact traffic, I'm on an end cap, so I went and looked on, you know, my neighbors' properties or anything of that nature.
Okay, thank you. Any questions from our Commissioners of the applicant? Okay, I would entertain a motion?
Well, last question.
Hold on.
Mr. Chairman, I move this item be approved with all staff recommendations therein.
We have a motion, do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second, roll call vote, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
Yes.
Horrigan?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Hodge?
Yes.
Latur?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel? Whitaker? Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you all.
It's approved, thank you very much. All right, Monty, help keep me straight here, are we down to item 15?
Yes, items 15 and 16.
15 and 16, okay. Item 15, we'll go ahead and have the reading of that, this is the Master Street Plan Amendment. And by the way, if we've got graphics or...
Brown?
Yes.
Harret?
Yes.
Haines?
Yes.
Hodge? Latour?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Yes.
Vogel? Whitaker? Motion passes unanimously.
All right.
Thank you all.
It's approved, thank you very much. All right, let me help keep me straight here, are we down to item 15?
Yes, items 15 and 16.
15 and 16, okay. Item 15, we'll go ahead and have the reading of that, this is the master street plan amendment. And by the way, if we've got graphics or maps to put up, this would be a good time to put those up.
Well, he's putting the map, oh, there we go. They, good afternoon, Chairman and Commission. My name is Walter Malone from the City Planning Department. This is a request to amend the master street plan. Just so everybody knows what the master street plan is, that's a document that's required by state law for any city that does subdivision regulation. So, what the master street plan is supposed to do is lay out where roads should be in the future, so that when a property owner comes forward and wants to develop their property, the city knows that whether or not there'll be a need for a road in that general location. So, that's the general purpose for the master street plan. The master street plan has local streets, collectors, and arterials, and freeways. The local streets are not, locations are not proposed, it's just a standard in the master street plan. The master street plan has general alignments for collectors and arterials, and potentially freeways, but in Little Rock metro area, it's just arterials and collectors that are the general alignments. The proposal today is to do an amendment to the collectors in this area in between Cantrell, Hinson, Taylor Loop, and Sampek. That currently, the master street plan has a collector that goes up from Hinson Road to Cantrell Road using Black Road as the final connection, and that's been on the plan for about 40 years. Shepherd is also currently on the master street plan from Old Oak back to Taylor Loop, also as a collector. So, the proposed change in today's, before you, is to remove Old Oak from Shepherd North to Highway 10 Cantrell in black, which would be its continuation, and replace it by an alternate route alignment that would start at Old Oak for Shepherd, using the current alignment of Shepherd, and then continuing into the Panky Edition, and it uses, I believe it's Webb, let me make sure I got that correct, no Ross, Road to get up to Cantrell Road. Currently, on Cantrell Road, there are two signal lights in the general vicinity where this collector is supposed to go, come up from the south to Cantrell Road. One is at the Kroger Shopping Center, which is pretty close to where Black Road intersects, and then the other one is at Sampek. This realignment would move the collector connection from the south to more centrally located in between the two connections, two currents, traffic signals. And the current terminus of Shepherd is actually one of the original blocks of Panky Edition. There's an additional four, roughly four block by seven-block undeveloped portion of Panky Edition, which is where this proposed alignment would go through. Panky Edition was a grid system of streets, very few got built, but the rights of way are all there, and the, but the, because of the topography of that ridge that I mentioned before, it's highly unlikely that a grid street system would be built west of Shepherd Road. If you notice, the dotted line takes a little bit of curve to the north, and that's to go around that ridge line, and basically say to the north, on the north side of that ridge line, that's west of Shepherd, where Shepherd currently terminates. There's also a public park on Russ, so they, which is the City of Little Rock Park. By having a collector that goes by there, that would also make it more accessible to the neighborhoods to the south as a neighborhood park. So, they, we just feel like the alignment change would be a better alignment change for general circulation in that part of Little Rock. So, that's the request before you, is to take Old Oak off the master street plan, and thus, it wouldn't show anything there, and if something gets built, it would be built as a local street, and to put Shepherd an extension on, and that would be built as a collector standards through the subdivision process when somebody came in to develop their property. There is no public project to do anything here, and as I've mentioned, a couple of people on the telephone that called in, the city very rarely, if ever, builds collectors, so the, most of the time, when the city's building a road or widening a road, it's an arterial. And so, the, it's just not very much, there's not enough advantage to, for the dollar from the city perspective, there are not enough people that would be able to take advantage of the road, usually for a collector. So typically, with the limited dollars that the city has, typically, the public dollars are used for arterials. Now, I cannot guarantee that, that that will be true in the future, but that's the norm. So, I just wanted to state that also.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Malone. All right, here's the way this, this opposition component works, so it looks like Walter stirred up a hornet's nest here, so. All right, I've got 11 cards, and we have a total of 20 minutes that we give to each side, okay? So normally, we have an applicant that comes up, and they get 20 minutes, and then the opposition gets a total of 20 minutes. So we'll hold both of those in the interest of time, both sides to 20 minutes. So what that means is, with 11 people wanting to speak, if, sometimes what we do is say, hey, if there's kind of a neighborhood spokesman, or someone who's, would speak for the neighborhood, they take the bulk of the time, and then others can sort of add on to that and piggyback on what they say. Otherwise, my guess is, you'll end up taking 1 minute and 45 seconds apiece and just repeating what everyone else says. So I'm going to go ahead and start with, I'm going to start with two people that just had, that were unsure and just had questions, and I'll call you up to the podium, state your name, and then you're off and running. But remember, and Mr. Thrower will keep the time on this, it's 20 minutes total for the opposition. So, the first up who's unsure, I have Larry or Donna Crenshaw.
First off, I'd like to know what the difference between an arterial street and a collector street is.
Hey, Walter, can you?
And does Shepherd qualify as a collector?
Sure, they may have a, Walter is the guy with the city who knows more about streets than the rest of us combined, so I'm going to let Walter get back to the podium and answer questions like that.
Arterials tend to be major roads, they go a long distance, they tend, when they're developed, they tend to be four or five-lane roads. Hinson Road is an arterial. Taylor Loop, Rawling is an arterial. Highway 10 Cantrell is an arterial. So in this area, those are the arterials. The next arterial would be Rodney Param to the east, which is being, which is under construction now, and to the west would be, the next arterial wouldn't be to Chanel, no, I'm sorry, it's Chappinol, and goes from Highway 10 down to Chanel. Those are the arterials. Collectors, the intent, the purpose of a collector is to get people out of the neighborhoods or to an area, to the arterial system, so that's the purpose of a collector street.
With my limited observation, Shepherd's a pretty narrow street, and a lot of people park on the curb in the evenings, and if that was a major artery to get to Highway 10, Shepherd is going to get congested very, very quickly. Is there any plan to widen Shepherd?
I, no, there's no plan to widen Shepherd. If, if there was, there wouldn't, money wouldn't be appropriated for it, likely.
Well, in the evenings now, we have to alternate who gets to pass the cars that are parked on the street. There's not enough room for two cars to pass with all the parking that's on the street, so Shepherd's a pretty narrow collector street.
All right. Yeah, and guys, I would, I think the purpose of this for city staff is probably just to get, we're just looking for feedback at this point on, from those that oppose, so I've written the parking issue down here on Shepherd. Next card is Pamela Voss, who is not in support of or in opposition to at this point. Ms. Voss?
Thank you very much for the opportunity to speak to you all tonight, and I'm very pleased to see a lot of turnout for this project. I am not significantly opposed to this project, I do have a great deal of concerns. I live in Conway, Arkansas. My family has owned Block 10 of Panky, which is directly on Highway 10, for approximately 60 years. I'm knocking on the door of 70, and I was about 10 when it was purchased. To tell you a little bit about that land, which you cannot see very well on this diagram, it is at the corner of Highway 10 and Russ Street. Russ is designed to be the collector road, and the Panky Park is adjoining my property, okay, on the south side. Within Block 10, there are streets, there are alleys that have existed, I guess, infinitely, I'm not sure, but they're not visible. I have recently had this property on the market for sale, and there's been a good deal of interest on it. Obviously, with this coming up, that has slowed things, and I'm removing it from the market. The plan and the ideal would be for that to someday be commercial property. Right now, it's zoned as residential. The Block 10 is slightly over one acre. Some of the concerns are that I have no details of what the plans really are that the city's looking at, other than we want to build a street through here. That would be a major road. The volume of the land that would be needed out of my parcel, Block 10, is totally unknown to me. At the same time, literally a couple of weeks after receiving the city's notice about their plan for the collector road, I received notices from RDOT. They want to extend Highway 10's widening. I've always known that would happen someday, some century, maybe in my lifetime. So right now, I have both the city and RDOT looking to take potentially very significant portions of Block 10, both on Russ Road, where the land adjoins Russ, and there's right-of-way that the state wants for both widening the highway and for utility drainage. Neither entity has provided me details of exactly what they're looking for, and how much of that land that there is, that they're seeking, which has a grave concern to me of the economic feasibility of being able to do anything with any remaining land. So again, I'd like to reiterate, I'm not opposed to growth. I lived in Austin, Texas for 30 years, recently retired up here about five years ago, and obviously, I'm used to growth, and I think it's a very good thing if it's planned very well, but you need to consider all impacts, and right now, there's not enough detail from anybody to be able to know exactly what's going to happen, when, and how. The state has told me that I should plan on perhaps receiving some appraisals for the land that they are seeking, probably two months, six months, don't know. So you can see where my concerns are. While I'm pro-growth, I believe any collector coming along that road and that intersection with Highway 10 would definitely need an intersection light. That intersection right now is basically an accident waiting to happen, because you have basically blind spots to the west. So those are my comments. I would appreciate more information, strong consideration of what you're going to be planning, even if it is many years down the road, what the impact would be, and would look forward to that information. And again, I think the land should be rezoned to commercial, as I said, right now it's residential. There's been some discussion between my representative and the city planning, and so far, there has been no interest from the city to either close those alleys, close those streets.
Okay, Ms. Voss, let me remind you, 20 minutes total, so, for everyone to speak, so. Okay, let's, don't count her time against the opposition, that's, I don't know what, we don't have a time limit for questioning.
They're out of line.
All right, we'll, we'll start the time over, you'll have plenty of time to state your case. Okay, anything else, Ms. Voss?
No, that summarizes my concerns.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Greg Mueller. Greg, are you in opposition, or are you just asking questions?
I'm in opposition.
Okay, all right, start the time.
Commissioners, thank you for hearing us. Been on Shepherd Road, or Shepherd Drive for the last 26 years, and we bought the property knowing that it was a local street. It's, it is built to local standards. In fact, when we bought it, there were drainage ditches down both sides, and then the city rebuilt it at 26-foot width, which is a local street standard. It makes, it does not make sense to me to require another developer to build a collector-style road, which is 31 to 36 feet wide, plus, you know, with a 60-feet of right-of-way, in this new development that you're talking about, and then connect it with a stoplight at Highway 10, and then feed that back into Shepherd, which is built to local road standards, most all of it, I measured in several places, 26 feet wide, and as has already been mentioned, there's very little room to pass for those folks going up and down there. In fact, if one car is parked, then there's only one lane to get by. So it doesn't make sense for me to feed a collector street off of Highway 10 back into that, and, you know, and gum up the traffic that way. I'd be more in favor of, and you've already built, been required, I think Old Oak is 30, is 36 feet wide, which I believe is collector status, 31 to 36 feet wide, is already 80% complete, you know, from Hinson all the way up to nearly, you know, nearly to Cantrell. I would be more in favor of just going ahead and finishing it at some point, I know it hasn't happened for 40 years, and I don't know what all the circumstances have been, but one developer's already been required to, you know, devote the land to the collector status and build, you know, an additional cost to collector status up through there. I know it doesn't have a sidewalk on part of it, but, you know, I'm opposed to that for those reasons. Thank you.
Thank you, Billy Turley. Yes, I suggested that in the beginning, I think that'd be a great idea. Okay, who would like to speak next in opposition? Is there anyone who filled out a card who would like to? I have a Jonathan Kazimi?
Mr. Chair?
I have a Wally Hall, yes, sir.
Point raised, I think what they're requesting is for them to get like a couple of minutes to meet and decide who's
to meet and decide who's going to speak.
No, we're ready now.
Okay, never mind.
But I'm just saying that we haven't had time to collect it. Now, I'm speaking for a lot of people today. My name is Jonathan Kazimi.
Okay, Jonathan, come on up and speak.
My name is Billy Tinsley. Good afternoon, my name is Billy Tinsley, and I am a resident of Pankey addition. I don't live there now, I have moved out of Pankey. But I grew up on Russ Street. My mother had to move the house off of Russ Street because years ago, it was stated that my mother's house was in the street. So the Russ Road that is connected to Highway 10 is not the correct road. The road that is the correct road to Highway 10 is the driveway, roadway, right in front of the home that I was raised in. So what road is the correct road of Russ Street? That's what I want to know. And then how is it that they coming through our neighborhood is going to benefit the people of Pankey addition? That's all I want to know. Thank you.
Okay. Alright, and who do we have here?
So I'm Jonathan Kazimi, sir.
Okay, Jonathan Kazimi, okay, go ahead.
How are you all doing? Thank you for your time today. Right, so one of the things you said was Walter stirred up a hornet's nest, and you can see here is definitely a lot of emotion here. We, on our behalf, have at least sent in 48 faxes to you guys in opposition to this amendment. We have some concerns. For the time, I do hope that the people who actually are living in secluded hills neighborhood, our opinions are being heard. Our main focal point in this opposition of the Amendment 15 is because of the traffic, the safety concerns. There are already several, several connections from Cantrell to Hinson. And currently going through Jerry, Shepherd, down to Old Oak and Hinson is a very high-traffic area. We had one of our neighbors recently said that a lot of cars park on the curb, and it is extensive. So by doing this master street plan amendment and connecting Shepherd to Old Oak, will create heavy, heavy traffic flow. If it gives you any kind of idea, with the garbage cans on the side of the road, the cars on the side of the road, and it's dark at night, we're playing Mario Kart just to get home, okay? It's pretty narrow. By extending this, we have kids that play in the front yard. We have people walking their dogs. We have people jogging our neighborhoods. It is a scary thought, which is why we're so much emotional behind this decision, to even increase traffic flow even more. Now, Walter has been great. I've communicated with Walter over the phone. We do have a concern that he had said there's nothing to be done with this just yet. So I don't even know why we're here talking about it, if there's nothing to be done with this just yet. One of the recommendations we do have, because we know the city wants to make money, the developer who owns this land wants to make money, and we're all about the growth, I'm all about growing Little Rock, is to treat this area like a one-way in, one-way out, like a neighborhood westbury that's right there on Cantrell. It sits behind secluded hills, it is not connected to us in any way, but is a pretty big neighborhood with several, several housing. And again, it's one-way in, one-way out. That is an opportunity to still develop this land, grow it for the city, grow it for that developer, but not impact those in secluded hills. Because again, on any given day, the amount of traffic that comes through there is pretty aggressive. What we're fearful is we don't want Shepherd to look like St. Charles or Green Mountain. We all know how heavy traffic is in that area. We moved to this area, a lot of people in our neighborhood has been there for 15, 30 years. And they're trying to maintain that neighborhood the way that they bought it. With that, I think that's pretty much all I can say for our neighbors. I'm glad that everyone is here. Again, thank you for everyone's time and consideration today. I greatly appreciate you guys all. Thank you.
Thank you. Next card I have is Wally Hall. 14403 Shepherd. Okay. Nancy Lott.
Good afternoon, I'm not sure whether it's evening yet, we've been in for a while.
We're just getting started.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. I rise in opposition to the road going from Shepherd to Russ to Cantrell. Planner Walter, I noticed on your, on your map here that you subtracted the streets in Pankey. There, you said there are about four blocks past Piggy on up the hill. And people own that land, and those streets are named. For you see Mrs. Pankey surveyed, had this place surveyed, Pankey surveyed, and the streets were named in 1907. This land has been there. As Ms. Tinsley said, Russ Street has always been off. And ma'am, that on Conway land, Russ Street should be about 10 feet over into your land. That paved road is not the correct road, so they would take even more. Yes, yes, and so we need to get that straight. The Little Rock planning need to get that straight on your drawing. I also rise in opposition because I have traveled that road for many, many years, even before I was able to drive. And Russ is a dangerous road to come out on Highway 10. It's already been stated that it's blind. You're blinded coming up that hill. And you would definitely have to put a light there. If that is the plan, there would have to be a light placed there on Cantrell Road. I think that this idea of having a collector road coming through Pankey is a very bad idea for both the community, this gentleman who spoke, and for the community of Pankey. Thank you.
Sky Brower. Sky Brower.
Hello, thank you for your time. My name's Sky Brower. I'm here in opposition, and I stand with the Pankey community. A couple of years ago, I became aware of the history of Pankey, and I wanted to learn more. And I remember making a brave journey out there one day to see what I could learn about history, and the first person I met was Ms. Billy Tinsley. I didn't know if she remembered me or not. But it took me about a year to really help integrate and myself and the community, show them that I had a real interest in helping preserve that neighborhood. It's a very historic black neighborhood here in West Little Rock, which is a very rare thing. And I know how West Little Rock development can be. I did not want to see that historic community chipped away at anymore. Today, I'm a proud member of the Pankey Community Improvement Association. I attend all the meetings. We work with the City of Little Rock on several things. We recently adopted Pankey Park and have been doing great things there. We have a new sign coming out there. Yes, it is a city park. It is available to anyone, but traditionally, it's used very much by that community. There's very little interest from anyone who's not connected with the Pankey community to make use of Pankey Park. I would just ask everyone to think, there's really, I have to echo what Billy said, Ms. Tinsley said, that there is no benefit to having people from outside the neighborhood a steady stream of that traffic coming through the Pankey community. I would think that secluded hills would feel the same way if the neighborhoods were reversed. You don't want a lot of people from outside of your neighborhood who you don't know traveling straight through all the time. So with that, the neighborhood of secluded hills and Pankey stand together. We like things the way that they are. We don't see, I understand the logic behind the plan. I understand the motivation for moving the street over because you don't want two lights so close together. I understand the logic of, you know, trying to increase more interest in Pankey Park, but we're doing that by ourselves. I do want to note that on here, at the very end of one paragraph, there was a line that bothered me. It said, "In addition, it would help to integrate the land of Pankey addition with the rest of West Little Rock." And historically, sometimes that word "integrate" can be a little bit problematic. Pankey has always been a part of West Little Rock. I know from my own ears, hearing people say, "We haven't always felt like part of West Little Rock." The best way that we can help Pankey integrate with West Little Rock is to become interested in the history of Pankey. And Ms. Nancy Lott, who just spoke, wrote the history book on Pankey. She co-wrote that. It's available at Pyramid Books or just about anywhere. It's a wonderful read. To become interested in Pankey and understand, become interested in helping preserve that community for future generations. A lot of people don't realize that many descendants of the same families that settled Pankey originally still live in the neighborhood. The Robinsons, the Piggies, the Norwoods. And so I'm here to stand with my friends and say that we do not want this. We welcome anyone to learn about Pankey. We welcome people to visit, but this is not something that would benefit the neighborhood. And thank you for your time.
Thank you. Madison Hedrick. Sorry if I got that name wrong.
You actually said it correctly.
Okay, great.
It's the first time. Okay, so I wanted to say thank you to everyone, you know, that's come to hear the planning commission. But my name is Madison Hedrick. I'm a resident of the secluded hills subdivision. I live right off on Cecil. I'm here today to speak against the proposed MSP amendment. It's adjacent to my home and my community, which I've already seen problems before increased traffic. So while I understand development of new properties is important for growth in this city, this particular, this particular project has caused a great deal of concern anxiety for the residents of my community, myself in particular. Since there's been more traffic with the gas station and other developments, which are great, I last year experienced an aggravated robbery while I was away from home. I'm, according to the Little Rock Metropolitan Planning Organization, traffic congestion in my region cost estimated $273 million and lost productivity. So I'm wondering how this congestion for a development, we don't, we don't know what it is, is going to impact our productivity costs for the city. Our streets are already congested during peak hours. In addition of a larger complex, let's say, whatever's going there is only going to make things worse. In addition to the traffic, there were 8,131 reported home or property violations in Little Rock, just 2020. So I'm wondering how a development, an increasing traffic, is going to increase crime rates in our area. Also, I want to point out that if there was a complex or a development, the National Realtors Association also says our property values would drop 10%. Now, I'm a single mom with two kids. They can't let them play in the front yard right now. On Cecil, okay? I'm on Cecil. There's too much traffic on Cecil, okay? So I'm, if you put this in, my kids are going to be in the backyard forever. And I'm just a little concerned about how this, when I don't know what it's for. I love new things, I love going to places, but how is this going to affect my quality of life and my children's life? And why are we doing this when I can't even let my kids in the front yard off of Cecil, not Old Oak? These are the concerns of my community, and I hope you guys weigh the potential impact because there's a lot of children, and they want to be in their front yard and their backyard. And I think they deserve that. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, the last card I have in opposition, and then I have a card actually who say they support this item, so I'll let them speak. After Brenda Hinson, who's in opposition. Ms. Hinson here.
Thank you, and I'll make it very brief. I just want to reiterate a couple of things that have already been said by Mrs. Lott and Mrs. Tinsley, and also by the other man, sorry, I forgot the last name. But I would have just made three points here. Now that I read this plan and I can see it, I also understand the RDOT plan. And it has to do with history. Historically, it used to be the Orange Highway Department, City of Little Rock have eliminated all historical black communities except Pankey. That is the last one, to my knowledge, that's standing. And instead of the city planning and remembering that scenic corridor that was going to remain with Highway 10, instead of the city planners, the department, the highway department, actually consulting and telling the people of Pankey what you really have in mind, we come up with some very interesting strategies. I am against it because this plan will simply help eliminate Pankey faster. And there has to be a better way for the residents because what is put here does not benefit the residents of Pankey community, and really, no one else.
Thank you, Ms. Hinson. Okay, I do have a card here. Arnold Hill, who says he supports this item. Mr. Hill.
Mr. Chairman and Planning Commission, that card is an error. I rise opposed to the proposal. And as a resident since 1988 in the secluded hills community, at the intersection of Shepherd and Old Oak Drive, which you can see on your illustration, is five houses from the intersection where the traffic would be most congested. I can tell you from my office window, which faces Old Oak, the traffic count, if you're interested, who walks, when, and what they walk, dogs, cats, whatever, from day to day. So I can tell you that that is already a very busy street. And having listened to all the previous speakers and to the Planning Commission spokesperson, I can't justify extending through the Highway 10 of Cantrell Road from our neighborhood. I think it's a wonderful idea to keep it a one-way in, one-way out as much as possible. And I don't see any reason, any rationale that concerns the welfare and the safety of that community that would be served by opening it up. Thank you.
Okay, thank you very much. I tell you, how much time do we have left? Walter, would you come back up to the podium, please? In my estimation, we only have 30 or 40 years to debate this before the city actually goes through with, or gets the funds for a arterial. In light of all of this feedback, and I don't know if this is typical with master street plan proposed amendments or not, but in all, in light of all of this feedback, do you want to revisit this and see if we can come up with something that helps the neighborhood a little better? Or would you like the Planning Commission to address it tonight?
I think it'd probably be better for everybody if the commission addressed it tonight. That way, they don't have to wonder, "Why am I be coming back?"
Okay, alright. Okay.
Yes, well, actually, that will stay on the plan. It stays on, Old Oak would stay on the plan.
Okay, we've got a couple of people who I think would like to be heard because they have their hands raised. If there's something different you'd like to add to the opposition other than what we've already heard, come on up to, young lady, come on up to the mic and speak, and then... Okay, thank you, Mr. Thrower. Well, I think the lady, I called on the lady that had her hand raised, who was walking up to the podium, but you may have had your hand raised too.
I had my hand up.
Okay, go ahead.
Okay, thank you. Thank you for indulging me. I didn't fill out a card today because I didn't know I was going to speak. I'm BJ Wirick, and I serve on the Little Rock City Board. And I'm the liaison between the Planning Commission and the City Board. So I'm going to start coming to these meetings and observing what's going on with the Planning Commission and give the City Board a heads-up as to things that are coming that we might need to know about. This would be one of them. The thing that bothers me about it, and I hope Walter can correct me on this, but it appears that all we did was send a letter to these residents and say, "This is what we're going to do for you." And... Okay, okay. My point with that is that it appears that this is coming to the Planning Commission, and there's not been enough work done in the community to understand what is, what is going to happen. Too many questions from what I'm hearing here. I have questions... I have questions about what this is supposed to do. One of the things that I'm curious about is if we set this up as a new collector street, what happens to that? What does that mean? Does that mean that it's earmarked from now on to the future until development starts? Or does that open up the door for the developers to come in and we say, "Okay, if you want to develop this, then you do have street improvements," and then the vacant land that's there is starting to chip away into streets and lots? There's not enough information, in my opinion, that's gone to the community. I think there needs to be a meeting. Cappy Peck serves this area. I think if Cappy was here, she would say, "I think we need to set up a meeting with the community to understand their questions, go through their questions." I mean, we've had questions, but they've kind of been open-ended, they've not been answered. So I would suggest that we hold this until we have a meeting with the community. The other thing that bothers me is ARDOT is involved in something. And it appears that the City of Little Rock and ARDOT ought to be working together to figure out what this looks like. And so those are my concerns, and I apologize for interrupting your meeting, but I think it's imperative that we hear from this community that's going to be impacted by all the traffic in the future. Thank you.
Okay. Let me, thank you, Director Wirek. Let me give the Planning Commissioners an opportunity to ask questions right quick of Mr. Malone or any of the opposition. My take on this, and I'm just one, so I'm just one of the commissioners, but my take on this, again, these master street plans go way out into the future. Literally, they are lines on paper right now. And so the funds for this, this may not happen in our lifetime, in that we have lots of streets. So what I would recommend is, I'd like to get some information, some questions from the Planning Commissioners, but my thought on it is that we would defer this until the community feels like they've had an opportunity to have adequate input in it. So any commissioners want to speak or ask questions? Go ahead.
This is Commissioner Thomas, and I'd like to echo what you just said, Mr. Chair, and also Director Wirek. It does seem that there is a lot of misinformation, and I'm also concerned that even the plan that was presented is from the communication from the citizens is maybe not even as accurate as it's supposed to be. I believe there was some streets or something, they said, that was misrepresented on the plan. And in addition, it doesn't seem to be a clear understanding from the citizens or that's been presented to me, to the Planning Commission, of what the actual proposed, I guess, improvement is and why it is for this area.
Any others?
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
I have a question for Walter, if he's here. Did he leave? Just a procedural thing. Given the fact that this is so many years out, given the amount of community concern, what's the driver in changing this now, particularly with what we've heard from the citizens, that there are some questions about streets? And I know there's a lot of other questions about Pankey that need to be answered before we make any things that could impact those residents. What's the driver of this? What's the intent, the driver of this change?
I believe that, I honestly don't know. Because it was brought... Hold just a second. Wait just a second. I honestly do not know, but because it was brought to me to do this and to go through the process. But most likely, it is what one of the people spoke about here, which is ARDOT's work, which would probably be to try to get in front of ARDOT's work for Highway 10 and to know where, if we want an intersection on Highway 10, where we want it. And right now, we would say we want it at Black. And so in any redesign that ARDOT might do with Highway 10, they would be doing it with a consideration that there's a collector coming from the south at Black. If they, for any redesign they did, right now, and all the other streets in Pankey would be a local street. And if, and so that might, that probably definitely will change the way they look at them and what they might do with them as part of any future project on Highway 10. That's my speculation. I do not know.
Anything else from the commissioners?
Just to, for clarification, am I to understand, we don't know why this is being proposed? And knowing how it's going to greatly impact these citizens over there?
May I speak?
Yes, sir. Please approach the podium. I assume you're in opposition to this.
My name's John McCarty, and I've lived on Old Oak for 35 years. And I lived on Old Oak before it went through to secluded hills and before Henson went out to Taylor Loop. And I happen to know that on June the 6th, I believe, there's a, there's a project that's going to be brought before your group called the Glens at Old Oak. And what they're wanting to do is they're wanting to build gated condo homes down at the end of Old Oak. And I know a lot of you people may not know about that. But I, but I do. And I've actually seen the plot, and if I'm not mistaken, it's on your schedule for June the 6th. So if I was a betting man, I would probably say that that's probably the impetus for this. So I'll let you all mull that over because I've actually, I'll send you the plot because you've already got it. Thanks.
Okay, thank you. All right. Commissioners, I would entertain a motion to defer at this point, or I would entertain a motion at this point.
Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Commissioner Vickers here. Yeah, I just wanted to say, as I'm listening to the community and citizens and the neighborhood there, at this point, you know, I kind of agree with you on a deferment or even kind of going back to the drawing table before they come back, before the, for the board, with maybe, because it seemed like there's a lot of confusions, confusion is going on, obviously, a lot of opposition amongst the neighbors. And right now, I personally feel uncomfortable with, you know, voting or even deferring at this point until we get some type of understanding, I think. Because right now, there's a lot of chaos, seems to be.
Well, it's...
Maybe they can go back to the drawing board and letting the citizens and the community understand actually what are the plans short...
Okay, so, well, we lost you, Commissioner Vic. We lost your audio there for just a minute.
Can you hear me?
Okay. In case you can't tell, I'm looking for a motion to defer this so the community and the neighborhood can have more input in the process.
Mr. Chairman, I move we defer.
I second.
We have a motion and a second for deferral. Roll call, vote.
Point of clarification.
Yes, sir.
If the motion to defer does not pass, then do we have to put it to a vote tonight?
Yeah.
Okay.
If the motion to defer, yeah, it's, guys, it's an agenda item on our agenda. We can approve it, we can turn it down, or we can defer it and communicate more and collaborate more.
Turn it down. Turn it down.
There's a motion on the floor.
There's a motion on the floor to defer. Roll call, vote, Mr. Thrower.
Brown?
No.
Hart?
Yes.
Haynes?
Yes.
Lodge?
The Chair?
Yes.
McDonald?
Yes.
Thomas?
Yes.
Vickers?
Pause communication. And can everyone hear me now?
Yes, sir. I can hear you, Commissioner Vickers.
Is this a vote to defer?
Yes.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Yes, I would like to defer.
Vogel?
Yes.
Whitaker?
Two.
Six?
Yes, one, no.
Okay, the motion passes. The item is deferred until a later time, and we'll talk with planning staff and create better channels of communication between city staff and the neighborhood. Okay, next item on the agenda, Planning Commission bylaws, proposed amendments.
They said there wasn't clear information to vote on it, but then they wanted us to vote on it. Yeah, but, yeah. Yeah.
So if you're finished, could you please move out into the foyer? Please move out into the foyer if your item has already been...
Yes, sir. We're trying to gather everyone out that way.
Okay, thank you. It may just be feedback.
I do know. We know that a huge portion of Pankey, a bunch of operations and everything, they've been...
Okay, next item on the agenda is Item 16, Planning Commission bylaws and proposed amendments. I think some amendments were sent out to the commissioners earlier. I don't know if you've had a chance to review those or not. Hey, guys in the back, can y'all move out, please? Guys in the back, please leave. Tom, you'll stay in here and talk all night. Get out of here. I still got work to do.
Talk all night.
I know. I know. Who on staff is going to take the commission bylaws, proposed amendments?
Mr. Chair, I'll take...
Thank you.
We sent a proposed, some proposed amendments to the Planning Commission bylaws out to you guys, I believe it was a couple of weeks ago. I hope you've been able to look over it. There were three, three changes. Two of them were fairly small and unsubstantive. First was the removal of any reference to the subdivision committee. I think about three years ago, that was done away with. And the same thing with the site plan review application. So those two items are just cleaned up in the new ordinance. The biggest change that I'm sure that you all saw was that there is a proposal to extend our notification boundary. From now, as it stands now, it's 200 feet, and that expansion would be to 300 feet. And we've actually, we've put together some information here just to show you guys what we're sort of talking about. Monty, you want to talk about why I get to this? You want to talk about it a little bit more?
What we did, we contacted a local abstract company and got their fee for doing title search list for an application that would come before you. And what we did, we took three, we just picked three random properties in Little Rock to do, to show you what financial impact basically we'll have on applicants to go from 200 to 300 feet. The first one that Brad just put up on the screen, this is an industrial area, Forming Road, Guyer, between Guyer Springs and University. It's a commercial industrial area. And basically, the 200-foot notification would involve 10 properties. And expand that out to 300 feet would be 12 properties. What we did, we took, figured out what an abstract list would cost, and then added in the postage for certified mail, which is $4.78 per certified letter. So in this particular case, your 200-foot notification would run around $297. And then your 300-foot notification would be $357. So again, this is one where you, it's larger lots, non-residential area, and so you don't have a whole lot of properties within 200 or 300 feet. The next one, we took an area, this is out in Sampek Road area. This is a larger, single-family lot area. This one, there are 29 properties within 200 feet. If you expand that out to 300 feet, that increases it to 46 properties. And with postage, your notification for an applicant would be around $863 for 200-foot notification, and then bumping it up to 300 would go up to around $1,370 for notification. The third example is a more urban area. This is the Hillcrest area, where this is a smaller lot residential area, completely, we picked a property that's completely surrounded by similar-sized residential lots. This one, there were 31 properties within 200 feet. You expand that out to 300 feet, that bumps it up to 56 properties. And with, again, with the postage, an applicant would pay approximately $923 as it is today with 200-foot notification. And bumping that up to 300 feet would increase that to almost $1,670. So it's a pretty big increase in a more urban area. So those are just three examples of what you're looking at in going from 200 feet to 300 feet and what the impact on the applicant would be.
A question. Is there a, is there a precedent for, I wonder if any other city does this? The area, I've always thought 200 was too small. It's just, 200 feet is not very much. But is there a precedent for stair stepping that requirement up as the development gets bigger? In other words, the young lady that was in here wanting to do the daycare tonight and needing that, so I don't want her to spend $1,667. However, we had on our agenda a few weeks back, it's since been pulled, moving a Chevrolet dealership to the intersection of Cantrell and 430. $1,600 is not a big deal, and the 300 feet certainly would apply. In that case, I would say 1,000 feet or, so I wonder if there's a case in any other city where the notification distance is based on the size and scope of the development being proposed?
Yeah, I don't have an answer to that. I don't...
I haven't...
That may be a terrible idea.
No, sir. I haven't, I haven't heard anything like that. I know that City of Benton, in particular, does 300 feet. But that's, really goes back to what our staff has been talking about. It's this small mom and pop, "I want to start a daycare." Those sort of people are going to be the most impacted by this. The people with the larger developments, the car dealerships or the big subdivisions whatnot, they can incur that cost pretty easily. And so that would affect, so it's really disproportionate. I think that your idea has some merit to it, but I don't know if there's any precedent for that.
Follow-up to Commissioner Hart, do we know what percentage of our applicants are commercial developers, say, a car lot or a shopping center or a large home development versus, say, somebody who owns a home and just wants to convert the usage of it? Do we have any feel as to what those differences are?
I don't think we have any hard numbers. It would just be a guess. But one thing to remember is, this is, what we're talking about is supplemental notice. The only required notification is what is required by the state, by state law, which is the legal advertisement that we put in the newspaper of general circulation. That's the only required notice. So this is just supplemental. That's the only required notice. So this is just supplemental.
This is Commissioner Thomas. I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Commissioner.
Yes, when we have applicants go through this process, do we post on maybe our city website, our City of Little Rock website, about proposed applications? Don't we post them there?
I'm not sure, I'm not sure what you're asking.
Like, someone makes application to come before us with an item. And that information is, is posted on our city website saying that this application is being submitted for, like the example we're already talking about, a daycare is being proposed here. They're making application, they're asking for rezoning or consideration for this. Don't we post that information on our website on when it's gonna be on agenda?
Well, that applicant, or that information does not go on the city's website until the agenda goes to the commissioners, which is one week before the meeting. Now, we do also, which is also supplemental notice, we do send notifications to all neighborhood associations that are registered with the city on every application. So we do that also.
Yes, the, excuse me, the reason why I'm asking is because in the way we disseminate information now in our technology world is greatly electronic, right? And we do want our citizens, our mom and pops, our individual property owners that makes up the City of Little Rock, that we want them to be able to participate in this process. So, I mean, going from, like the example on the screen, from $900 to $1,600 is going to be a lot for the average family home. I mean, given our increased lately, utility costs to housing, our food costs, this is quite a bit of cost that's going to not make everyone financially available to participate in the process if they wish to. So I'm totally against increasing it to 300 feet. It's gonna be quite a bit of cost in addition to their application costs and other processes, you know, things that have to do to participate in this process. We have, you know, internet, we have text messaging, we have so much electronic ways we can notify and make this information public besides increasing their cost to participate in this process.
This Commissioner Latour, I agree 100% with Commissioner Thomas. I, I don't think adding 100 feet, picking up what, 20 more houses? I don't think it's worth the cost. I think the friction we get into is when, pardon me, is when somebody comes in and says, well, I didn't get, I didn't hear anything from my neighborhood association. I didn't, I didn't get the email. Well, perhaps that could be solved by the city making sure that they document that they sent the email to the proper person. But I, I think we're on, I don't think we gain much for a whole bunch of costs that really doesn't need to be borne by the applicant. So I'm against.
I think we, we may need to start posting this information as public notification to our website. And once that information is circulated and people get, you know, the rhythm or the constant information that, hey, if you want to know about an application, go to our city website like you can anything else for city services to our website. And that is definitely public notification.
Yep, two, two points of information. Number one, I kind of agree with Commissioner Hart that I feel like a stair step version of this needs to be investigated because number one, I'm agreeing with all the other commissioners that for mom and pops, this is an issue. But we also have a number of commercial developers, and they've come through here, where notification doesn't always go the way it's supposed to. And they get really kind of tricky with that. And then also, when you talk about neighborhood associations, not all the neighborhood associations are functional. I'm apparently part of a neighborhood association I've never heard from in my entire life and found that out through being a citizen impacted by the process and still haven't heard anything from me even after asked about it. And also, a lot of people do not look on the city website. So I, I agree that putting extra burden on mom and pops, I'm totally against that. But I also think that for the big commercial developments, there does need to be more. I don't know if it's supposed to be like the applicant, but the kind of change, right? Are you going to change zoning and build something new? Or are you going to change the use of existing structure? I don't know if there's a way we can work that in there. But I, I think this one-size-fits-all is what has me very nervous on this, more than, more than any change.
I just had one comment to make about this. I hear the stair step option, and I was thinking about if we do it by use, would that be something adequate? Because if you have the residential and that be at 200 feet, that may be a better idea. And then if it's commercial, it can be 300 feet. Because if you look at the other slide, the first slide that you had of showing the, the commercial layout and how it was around $200, I mean, that's not, that's not a lot of, a lot of buildings weren't kind of in that area, whereas in the neighborhoods you had a lot of homes. So maybe if we expand the commercial and industrial to 300 and all residential changes to keep it at 200, maybe that will be sufficient.
Can, can we have staff maybe go back and do a little research on, on that between now and the next meeting?
I, I think that we, we definitely will do that. And to Commissioner Thomas's point, I mean, technology is something that we use every single day. And I mean, there are things out there like the Nextdoor app and other things that we can get this information out. But I mean, if you look right now, look at the disparity. I mean, look, $350 as opposed to $1,600. And think about the amount of money that those people that are gonna be, you know, making it, you know, having a daycare as opposed to building a high-rise, you know, commercial retail development, how much money that they are gonna be making as compared to each other. So, but yes, sir, I think that as a staff, we'll, we can, we can look into that and come back.
Because this is just postage, right?
Yeah.
These numbers are just postage?
No, no.
It's the search, the title search too?
It's the title search plus postage.
Plus postage, okay.
In addition to this, in addition to the citizen having to pay for this notification and postage, they also have application fee as well.
Right.
So this is not the only fee. So this is like, this is quite an impact on the average household.
Yeah, I want to make a point real quick. This is Commissioner Vickers. I do agree with the commissioners, everybody who stated, which is Commissioner McDonald, Commissioner Thomas and Chairman. If we can look at, just going forward for the future, because technology is playing a strong part, Web 3 is playing a strong part. So we have, for example, we have an application fee, we have a title search fee. Maybe they can pay even as a, maybe a one-time subscription fee or annual, depending on, you know, you know, what they're bringing forth to the board and, and, you know, and their, whatever projects or they have going on. Because, you know, you know, the city still can get, you know, they'll bill and payment, but it can be more cost-effective because, well, you know, I hear people from time to time and more often than so, that they come and say, well, I didn't get notification. I didn't get the letter in the mail. So if we have something, some technology that they can have, you know, for an app that they can go to, or just make this as an option that they can have, that they can go to and look at, well, no, you received this on May 11, 2023 at 5:49. It's, it's there on your phone or your computer laptop, et cetera. And, you know, everything, a course of action still can be taken. Fees can still be collected, and everybody still get the information in real time. Thanks.
What is it again that the state requires the sign, put a sign up in the yard?
No, that's also supplemental.
Oh, they just require a notice in the daily record?
Notice in the newspaper and that's it.
Yeah, and see, that's inadequate because that doesn't allow the neighbors. I mean, nobody reads those notices, so we all know that. So, okay. So staff's gonna look at this and we'll talk about it next month. Is that fair? Okay.
You want to push it off to the June agenda then?
June agenda, yeah, yep.
So, so when, when Brad and I report back to Director Collins on this, was it fair to say that the general consensus of the commission is that you're not necessarily in favor of a blanket going to 300 feet? You're more interested in maybe leaving the residential type applications at 200 with a graduated scale going, a larger notification area for non-residential applications? Is that fair to say?
Yeah, I think that's fair to say. And, you know, I came here actually thinking, okay, 300 feet sounds fine to me. But when I saw the sticky note with the $1,600 on it, and I thought about, you know, somebody who's just doing a, a daycare is a great example, that, that's, that's just not.
And just a point of information.
Well, I, I know I speak for, I know I speak for myself, this Commissioner Latour. I don't find you gain one dang thing by going from 200 to 300, whether it's commercial or anything else. There's not one son of a gun in this town that didn't know about, about bail Chevrolet. I mean, Wally Hall came tonight, pardon me, on, on, oh, no. I mean, we're covering over 100 feet and adding cost, adding cost to everybody. So for sure, we're adding cost onto the commercial people if we, if we go this route. I mean, I'm, I'm only one vote, but I am totally opposed to, there's no reason to go to 300 feet when there's so many other options that are technology-based and not have to stick the applicant with these costs. So that's one man's opinion.
Just, just a point of information, thing that took me back just to staff, the fact that the industrial applicant who can absorb, who could, in your examples, who could absorb more of the cost because of the industrial situation versus like the homeowner with a bunch of folks around him, that's what, that just seems backwards. So, I mean, I do think we need to explore better ways for notification, but I don't know if we can come to that decision tonight.
Okay, so staff will do research and we'll talk about it next month. Thank you, staff, for doing the research that you did. That, those costs were very helpful to me. Because like I say, I came here thinking 200, 300, no big deal. But when you look at it from a cost perspective, it, it is a big deal. Okay, any citizen communication? We have no citizens left. We ran them all off, guys.
I have a question, if you mind.
Yes, ma'am.
I, I just had a question about, you know, the rees. That, that whole thing is kept being pushed back due to the amount of commissioners. So I just wanted to kind of get an idea, like, how many times can we continue to push that one back? Because a lot of people specifically have come for that one, and I believe the shopping center. And I believe that's been twice that they've had to defer. So I was just kind of wanting to get an idea of how many times we can push that back.
This project's, this project's gone on for about five years, even back when I was on the commission. They just never have agreed.
Commissioner McDonald, this is Sean. In answer to your question, you, you're right about being concerned about it because what will eventually happen is they'll file an action in the, in the circuit court for either some sort of declaratory judgment or some sort of due process claim because we're denying them the right to come before the planning commission. So it's, it's a good point.
Well, and, and, yeah, I, I was just gonna say, I mean, the issue's on us. We, we just have to get enough people, either online or in person, to hear these items. And that's just the bottom line on that.
I was just gonna propose that next time, we just let the six people go and not give them, give anybody the option because I just wouldn't want to put the, the public in the situation to where something got approved because the process didn't work out.
A point to that, we require six votes, I'm sure that's in the bylaw. I mean, if, if we're gonna have a commission that consistently doesn't have 11 people present, unless they averages nine, is there a way to change that to just a majority of those present? Just five commissioners of the nine approve it?
I believe so. I will, I will check into that because I don't want to give you bad legal advice.
We don't want bad legal advice.
You know, so I will, I will look into that and talk to Tom. Because I think it's our, it's in our bylaws and I think we can amend those. But I will just, would like to confirm with, with the city attorney before I make a firm statement.
Thank you, Alicia, for bringing that up. That's a, that's a well-timed comment. And it's, it won't necessarily get any better during the summer as we start taking vacations and stuff.
Well, I got a question. I, I mean, isn't it the commission's responsibility to be here? That's what we signed up for?
Yes, sir.
I don't think, I, I mean, I think it's our responsibility to make the meetings regardless, to make sure that we have 11. So I know that thing come, things do come up, but I think the past.
It's in our bylaws, so we only have, you're only allowed three absences and then you're kicked off.
Correct, that's correct. So I think it's our responsibility to be here.
Two absences, is it three or two?
Three, three.
It's, it's, it's three in a row or 25% of the meetings during the course of a year.
Okay.
And with that being said.
And that's three.
And with that being said, just give you a heads up about the June meeting. With everything that's been deferred tonight, you're gonna have around 34 items on that agenda. It's gonna be a huge agenda. You know, we're starting, we'll start off with at least five or six that were deferred that will be on regular if the same people show up that did this time. So encourage everyone to be here at the next meeting because this will be a long one.
And Mr. Overton, we still have an open position on the commission, don't we?
We have one open position, and because of attendance, you're likely to have two open positions at the June meeting.
That is frankly all the more reason to scrap the six votes and let's just do a majority of the commissioners who are here. I mean, as a former developer who's sat out there and, and, you know, made application, there's nothing more frustrating than getting everything ready to go and you show up and you got six, seven commissioners and you, and you have to defer. So, I mean, that's.
So we just basically, the, the commission would just like to go to a simple majority, no matter how many members. Would that be what we're looking at?
If that's something that's legal, I think it, I think it's something that should be considered. But that's just me. I, I don't think any of the rest of the commissioners have weighed in, but that's just me.
I'm in favor of that, but isn't it something currently on the bylaws that it takes at least, isn't it five or six votes to pass an application?
Yes.
Yeah, it, it's six, and we're, we're talking to Mr. Overton about seeing if that can change. So is there any opposition from the commissioners to doing, to exploring that?
I wouldn't do the majority per se. I would just more, you know, if, if, if attendance is an issue, then there would be an amendment to go to majority. But if you had, you know, nine, I would just, you could leave it at what it has always been. That is just what I think would be a better option.
The way it, the way it is now, and I'm not sure whether it's bylaw or state law, and I look forward to that, but the way it is now, the city board is under the same rules that we are. It's a majority of the members of the board, so it's a majority of 11, which is six. No matter how many are there. Now, if that could be changed, I'm all for it. If it can be done in the bylaw, that's great. But the way it is now, it reads that you have to have a majority of the commission, just like you have to have a majority of the city board.
Yeah, and just, Mr. Overton, you know, I'm not a developer, but much like Commissioner Hart, as a citizen, there's nothing more frustrating than getting all dressed up and having a presentation ready to go and having to go back home, right? But what I'm concerned, well, I'd like some feedback from you on before we have a discussion about this. Is number one, the Commissioner Latour's comment about is it a majority of the commission? Is that bylaw, is that law? And then also, does reducing that open us up to any liability if something gets passed and gets challenged? So like, for example, say Bob Jones or whoever comes in and they're, they're an applicant. If they apply, we have a majority, let's have six people here, only five can vote. Three say no, two say yes, it doesn't pass. Does that open the city to liability at that point? And, and that's what, we need some, that feedback from you.
I will research all these issues and I will, I will get everyone an answer probably Monday or Tuesday. Well, Monday's a holiday. I'll have something from Tom on Tuesday.
Sorry for all the homework, guys. Sorry for all the homework, guys. That's, that's not the intent. The intent is to have it on the agenda and get it done. But there were just a lot of questions tonight and, and good, really good questions. So if there's no other business before the commission, we stand adjourned.
Ms. Chair?
Yes, yes, sir.
You do have one other item unless you wish to defer it to another meeting, and that's the election for vice chair.
Oh, the election of vice chair, yeah. Well, you know what? Let's, again, due to a, we've got what, four missing? Let's just defer it to the next, we'll just, we'll just defer that. I, I don't, I don't wanna do that with, with seven commissioners present, so, okay. Okay, thanks, everybody. We stand adjourned.